Okay, it is two thirty and we will have our study session. It's a continuation of the Parks Master Plan update. And I guess I'll look at city manager before he turns it over to Mr. Hammond.
I think we started out optimistic at the last one about our time slot. Now we realize we may still be pressing to get through it today, so.
Doubled the time and still not sure.
Right. I'll turn it over to Jeff Hammond. But we did say that we wanted to jump topics a little bit and talk about Jerry Ivy Pond, just because that's a significant conversation and decision point for you that we want to make sure you have the opportunity to talk that one through. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jeff Hammond, Parks Director.
Thank you. I do have a few updates of some of these slides I already spoke about last week, since it has been three weeks since the last study session. So but then, as Mr. Strag mentioned, we're going to focus our comments or focus our discussion on Jerry Ivy Pond and what that looks like for the future. On the, under the tennis, be the third slide. There was an item on here about staff working to get more water applied to grass and apply more grass seed. Those areas were, those areas of erosion at the tennis complex at Kenwood Park were addressed in the last three weeks. And hopefully we get some grass growing. Pickleball is the next slide after that. If you have been by Oakdale Park, they, they have our, have been actively working on painting the courts. And we had a color scheme of a green overrun area and two shades of blue of the pickleball area. And I believe today or tomorrow, they're working on the white striping of that area. Gates were a little delayed, so gates will be in soon. And then net posts will be in shortly as well. Also, it appears that the contractor has, the demolition contractor, the restoration contractors finished with the north tennis court restoration. And park staff will be seeding that area to the north in between the pickleball complex and the bathrooms here in the next few weeks. Jumping to park bathroom enhancements and modernization. I believe it was Commissioner Longbine asked me about, asked about the bathroom at Bill Burke Park, the concrete work that's going on there that started last week. The steps have been poured to that new, new bathroom that we installed in the middle or the central part of the park. The ramps that going to that step to access that bathroom have been formed with plywood. And those will be poured this week. And the last update I had was for refurbishing trail with limestone screening slide. There's also skate park on that same slide. Bill Burke, the limestone screenings had been completed at Bill Burke Park. That was completed prior to the marathon. And the remaining trail that I mentioned in the slide about Indian Rock Park, Elmhurst Trail and Jerry Ivy Memorial will be done as a winter project with our park staff. Sunset Park, we are working on, Sunset Park is the next slide after that. Working on a scope of work for the demolition of the horseshoe pit area and the tennis courts at Sunset Park. And that's where, that's where, I'm sorry, that's where we left off last time. And I did want to mention at Sunset Park, the neighborhood has reached out to me over the course of the last year and a half, two years, about their desire to have a court space back at Sunset Park. It's somewhat contrary to our tennis park, our tennis court plan that we discussed many years ago when we went into the projects of the Kenwood Park tennis courts and the Jerry Ivy tennis courts with USD three oh five. But they have expressed their desire to have a court space back in the future. They are supportive of the, supportive of the parking areas that we did put in. So let's move.
Comment, what about, have they given input about the dog park?
I, I got, I did float the idea to them of what would they think about a dog park to several, a few of them. Their comments were that they believe Sunset Park is a walking dog type park because they use the, they, they do a lot of walking of dogs there on leash around the oval parking of the oval drive of the park. They did not, the few, I'm talking about two or three, indicated that they, they didn't see the need for a dog park. They weren't necessarily opposed. However, they saw that Sunset Park as more of a dog walkers park than a need for a dog park itself.
Well, I've spent a fair amount of time at the dog park with my new dog. And I didn't realize how sacred that ground is to those people. And, you know, it was closed yesterday, I believe.
For the, yeah, for the race.
They would really like a second dog park.
And respectfully, I don't think they understand exactly what a dog park is about because it's not about, it's completely contrary to on leash walking. It's, it's let them go and have fun.
Right. It's socializing.
Yes.
For the dogs and the people.
Yeah. It's off leash, right, right. And then we also talked about that additional dog park, the potential for that adjacent or near the Friendship Carver Center. We also, we talked about that recently as well.
Those that walk, are they on a sidewalk or are they walking in the street?
They most all walk on the street, on the park street that is a kind of an oval park street through Sunset Park.
That's maybe not the most desirable situation.
There is a pedestrian path on the inner part of that drive. That's a four or five foot marked painted. And so they generally have kept to that. They generally, most people keep to that in Sunset Park, so.
And it's a one way.
It is a one way, yes. It is a one way circle. So those are some of their comments.
And is there enough square footage there where the horseshoe pits are for a dog park, do you think?
I believe there would be. I wouldn't say it's the size of Barclay Park. I could not repeat to you the measurements off the top of my head as in comparing the two. I think if it was one dog park, it'd be plenty. If you did two dog parks where you separated small and dog, I'm not sure if there's enough there for that in the horseshoe pit of itself.
What if we moved the basketball courts over to where the tennis courts were?
I, I believe the basketball court at Sunset is somewhat sacred and not necessarily in the location it is. I would never want to remove it. But if we moved it, I, I think that would be, that would be a good, something that certainly we can look at.
I think that's probably the most used part of that park.
Oh, I, I would agree with you.
So Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, but our assessment of the horseshoe pits and the fence and that area was it probably wasn't conducive to just convert that to a dog park and use the fence as it currently sits. We would be looking at creating a new fenced dog park.
Correct. The fence, I reviewed that fence recently. It is not in the greatest of shape. It's galvanized. We would look at a whole new project with new fence.
And from what I've heard, I think private money would want to contribute to that, just like they did the existing park.
Is there any formal way in which we've canvassed folks who live, let's say, within a mile or so of that park?
Not necessarily a formal way, but we certainly could create a public input opportunity. And part of the question would be how, how far you want to extend that, that notice. We could certainly do that before we proceed.
In different cities and obviously here too, once a dog park is opened, dogs show up. It is truly when those build it and they will, they will come phenomenon.
And I have to admit, when we built the first one, not being all that familiar with it, I think everyone was working from a presumption that there was going to be a lot of noise. I don't, I don't think that's our actual experience that.
If that's the case.
I don't, yeah, I don't hear that kind of noise coming from Barclay Park. Even in the dog park behind the animal shelter, I don't hear that kind of noise.
I'm just amazed. Everyone knows each other's dogs' names and it's.
Go into a little more detail about what Commissioner Davis said. It was my intent, when the time came, to reach out to the neighborhood, getting a database of addresses, sending out an invitation to a public opening, whether that be a special opening just for that residence and we hold it at Friendship Center or Carver Center, or we use the Parks and Rec Advisory Board for that meeting. But that was my intent to do some, that's what I like to do is do some type of public opportunity for input.
When you talk about the court demolition, is that, was that going to be the basketball area as well? Or just the tennis portion? So those never struck me as being in that bad a shape. If we're going to restore them, would it be a complete redo? Or would be, we just be.
Of the original evaluation of all courts, Jerry Ivy, Sunset and Oakdale, those are the, in the worst condition. The, the greatest separation of asphalt was, was deep and wide. The asphalt substructure of those that court at Sunset is not in, it was unsafe. And we actually closed them for tennis court purposes, removed the nets. And part of that was a contribution of an opinion from our insurance carrier.
Okay. Back to Sunset, I have visited with members of the War Memorial Group and they are kind of in a waiting period, waiting on design to come back. And they really would like to get really full strength fundraising, so.
Yeah, we met with them a month or so ago.
Yeah.
Confirmed that next step is to finalize their design plans, cost estimates, and, and let us take a look at them, review them and make sure we're all on the same page.
So if you, if the commissioners are willing, jumping ahead a little bit, maybe two slides to Jerry Ivy Memorial Park Water Feature. I've attached with, for you, the results of the citizen survey that was taken about what kind of elements the citizens would be desirous, desirable of. We had a hundred and seventy respondents to that survey. It started February twenty fourth of two thousand twenty-three and ended in March, a few weeks after. The results were from March fourteenth of this year. And some of our desires for the water feature and for a design and engineering process would be to, you know, play, to give some honor to the memorial stature of the park to, as a police memorial. Make sure we have photo opportunities for proms, homecomings, which is what the gazebo is often used for. We want to potentially renovate or refresh our existing splash pad. Destination lighting, possibly update the gazebo and incorporate that into a future design and potentially even move it if we need to. You know, consider some of the features that were highlighted in the survey that had the hot, had a higher, a high, high percentage of votes. Landscaping improvements, removal or revamping of the stream feature that was, that's there, that was be supported, was previously supported by the pond. Complement our existing trail system and, and also being the fact that it's at a major intersection of Magnolia and Ohio, what it looks like from the road and, you know, complementing our city, complementing that corridor intersection. I was at the park today and we're having an evaluation of our splash pad. We've had some, had some problems this summer with electrical mechanical issues with that splash pad. And we're having an evaluation done. Some of the concepts that I've picked up on from the citizen survey results, they seem to focus on natural components, flowing water components, limestone material, an architectural water wall incorporated with that and something that's an organic design. And that's something that would approximately cost six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So those, those are the survey that we did this earlier part of the year. Timeline. Well, I guess I need to speak with the city manager a little more about that. But we'd like to be able to, you know, have something next year, of course, and move forward with next year. And, but at this point, I think I might like to open it up for feedback or questions about Jerry Ivy Water Feature from the commissioners. If the mayor's willing.
Questions?
More of a comment, just in terms of longevity and sustainability, the, the fountain slash water feature just sounds like a fantastic idea to me. And I'm assuming there would be ways to design it so you're not going to have any issues with, with the algae, some of the other problems. I guess the only quandary would be the ducks and other fowl hang out in the area, but it can resolve itself. But I wish I could remember where I, I was traveling and there was a limestone water feature, which obviously it's limestone, so ubiquitous here. And I wish I, I'm going to look for, for that in my travel photos, but it was something like that kind of pops up with, again, being organic. Yep. And really don't have any questions other than how realistic is that six hundred thousand dollar, dollar sign? Or is it not just a? Well, I think we would need to get into that design and engineering phase to get some estimate of costs.
Yeah, and I think we'll be mindful of early in the process trying to size up costs so that we are hitting it from both directions. Is the scope, if we limit the budget, are we limiting the scope too tightly and not meeting your expectations? And then conversely, making sure the scope doesn't, you know, go beyond your expectations, whether it's the actual, what's built as well as the cost of it. But it, that's going to be a balancing act and.
Because when we had them look at this project the first time, they came back and what were their numbers? They were.
Nine hundred?
At least, I thought it was over, I thought it was seven figures.
It was closer to a million.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
At the, the, at the top of the line was, yeah, a million.
Yeah. Plus, I think we need to look at, you know, what the ongoing cost is also to it.
To Commissioner.
The water pad, I definitely think we need to address that. Even though that's not a water feature, that, that is really heavily used over there.
It is very heavily used. It's the most popular of our three.
How old is that water pad? Splash pad, I should say.
It was, there was a commission action for that in two thousand and five. So I would imagine in two thousand and six was put into its first season. It was done, a lot of it in-house, similar to how you would think of the pond was done in-house. A lot of contributions and self-performing work, contracted plumbing, contracted electrical. We bought kit, bought a kind of a, the water features, things that are stand up and spray water. We bought those and had the plumber put those in. So to Commissioner Linkwood's point, we would certainly, and I didn't, I didn't include it here, but obviously maintaining a fountain, water feature, whatever that looks like, would be an important concept as well. And keeping ducks out, chemically treating if we need to or want to.
Is it your intent to stick with these basic designs by McClure or reach out to open the book?
It's my intent to go, keep to the suggested objectives of what I would like to accomplish with the park, which is, I listed out on the slide.
Because these are just concepts with cost estimates, right?
Correct. The, from the survey.
Right.
Yes, the, they kind of looked at, I asked for McClure to be here. I'm not sure if they actually are here or not on Zoom, but they are listening in.
Yeah, I saw someone pop in.
Now, I wouldn't, we've got all the money in the world, but for what we're trying to accomplish, six hundred thousand dollars is not an outlandish amount of money. And if there's any opportunity for private donation, I would think the water feature would be at the top of the list if we can supplement this with, with private contributions. But if we're trying to make a destination park, six hundred thousand is, I don't want to say doing it on the cheap, but it's awfully, it's going to be a tight budget.
I'm surprised by the number of social media photographs I see in our park system, whether it's homecoming prom and weddings in particular. That's kind of in the back of my mind that it needs to be a venue that's conducive to that in some way.
Do, do we have a budget? Because I, the gazebo needs some work to it too. Do we have a budget set for that or no what? Because there's some dollars need to be spent on that, I believe.
The gazebo itself was, we did do some minor improvements. I wouldn't call them improvements, but we did some minor repairs. And it's really an ongoing repair of wood, replacing wood and repainting.
Just painted a couple of years ago by volunteers from the Arch Church, I believe.
It has been painted recently, yes. And we also replaced some wood, but, you know, it's certainly, there, there's certainly other elements to the gazebo that would need to be addressed over time, whether it be the roof.
Structurally sound?
It is structurally sound, yes.
That's the main thing. Well, back to the water feature, I think, you know, we need to some, get something that's practical and easy to maintain. Which probably none of that's going to be, nothing's going to be easy. But we don't have a great track record with water features here. And it is a ongoing thing to maintain it, but.
Yeah. I think if we did have a flowing water structure, we would have some type of capturing device so we can clean one point rather than looking at it in the Sunset Park model where you have multiple points along that. So we would try to keep that in our mind when we're designing any flowing water feature at Sunset or at Jerry Ivy Park.
Yeah. I do think we need to remember as a commission that I think we all pretty much committed to filling in Jerry Ivy and then following up and not just forgetting about it.
Yes, sir.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't hold back from setting the budget a little higher, like maybe a million, just because we don't want to restrict the ideas that come along, the potential. But, and we want whoever the designers tend to be.
Fundraiser contributor down here.
I do agree.
To be able to.
Must be more.
Bring the good ideas forward.
Yeah.
I'm reminded of a, of a pavilion that's in the, in St. Louis University. And I gave Mr. Strag a picture of this that has a nice monument setting in the center with a splash park around the outside. And it's built with the kind of stadium seating that also incorporates waterfalls coming down through the portions that are sitting. And I thought, I just printed this picture out and provided it to him because I thought it incorporated a lot of the essential elements that we're trying to put into this. And he had it packaged it together in a centralized place. So I think there's a, sky's the limit on the creativity for, for that option.
And Jerry Ivy is a, one of our top four decimation parks in Salinas. So that's definitely in my mind as well while we go into a design and engineering phase.
Back to the splash pad, can that, is that going to need to be just tore out, start over or rebuilt?
Well, that's the intent of the evaluation that we're doing with a kind of a pool aquatics consultant that started today. They're giving an evaluation of its current condition, potential changes, and even putting together a possible project to, to either refresh it or a recommendation for something different. We have seen examples of pictures, I think there's some in Colorado, where there's a destination water fountain or water feature incorporated with a recreation children's play area. I, I don't know if that would be in the, it'd probably be not in the six hundred thousand dollar range, but there are opportunities for that as well.
That scenario creates an opportunity to incorporate it into the water feature, free up the spray ground space and then really leave room for expansion of playground in that, the area that the spray ground is currently. That, we do have considerable amount of space at Jerry Ivy, so that's something we will probably take a look at.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
I don't think it meets with any opposition, but, and I think it came out of this group's suggestion. But one of the items is updating the Jerry Ivy Memorial as well, trying to make that part of this water feature rather than have it be a standalone element as it currently exists possibly to be more respectful possibly.
So is the intent to follow up on this after the first of the year or?
The intent is to make a proposal to the city manager about how we go forward and, you know, start doing a request for qualifications, assuming that's his feedback. And then start moving on it so we can have something for you next year to review and to potentially approve.
Okay.
Going back a slide to the neighborhood park study, I provided that, found that in our archives where there was a neighborhood park study done. And it highlighted some neighborhood park possibilities, partnering with the school to find locations that, in particular neighborhoods that needed, needed accessible park land. And from the result of that, in nineteen ninety-nine, the city entered into an agreement for Schilling Elementary, well with, I'm sorry, with USD three oh five for Schilling Elementary and for Heartland to create Schilling Park and Kennedy Park. Part of the master plan recommendations were to, you know, were to end these agreements or consider alternatives to these agreements. It's my recommendation that we, we do not modify these agreements with the USD three oh five. We have made some improvements at Schilling Park and Kennedy Park recently, whether it be parking or signage or drinking fountains, what have you. And I believe they're well served in the communities in which they, in the neighborhoods that they reside. Also, in part of the school relationship is some access to neighborhood soccer fields. There's a portion of grass at both of these facilities that have an opportunity for soccer as well. So we have some soccer goals there and those do get heavily, I wouldn't say heavily used, but they do get used by the neighborhood. So I just, just to repeat myself, there is a master plan items to consider ending these agreements or modifying these agreements. And it'd be my recommendation not to move forward with that.
And I would note, I think there was some presumption that the school has playground equipment nearby. But in some instances, some elementary schools' access is limited. And then if you're a mother with children or a family with children trying to make use of it while school's in session, it's not really available to you. So I think they probably serve more purpose than might have first been considered with that recommendation.
Are the agreements are at the pleasure of both parties or are they?
It is a, it is a pleasure of both part, both parties. It's somewhat, ninety-nine, it was a ten-year primary term. And then there is ten. term. And then there is 10, there's self-renewing terms of five-year increments from there. And both parties have the opportunity to give notice within six, six months prior to the end of that contract. So if either party wished to do that, it could. The reason I'm bringing it up now is that that six-month period is coming, is approaching. And I wanted to, you know, put it before the public about our intent to keep those agreements. Moving on to prefab, pre-construction bathrooms, we've seen some success with these prefab, pre-construction bathrooms at Bill Burke. We have opportunities to, we have a park bathroom remodel or refresh. There are two park bathrooms in our system, one at the north side of Lakewood and also on the south side of Jerry Ivy that are kind of an open-air camp-style bathroom. These are gonna be pretty difficult to remodel. We would like to replace them with a prefab, pre-constructed bathroom at each of those locations in the, in the, in the future. The estimated price was about $88,000 each. That's for a two-fixture, two-fixture unit. And this would also provide support with a improved bathroom for the tennis site at Jerry Ivy Park.
That would be from the same company we got the Bill Burke?
Could be. There are other companies out there. When we purchased those bathrooms, we purchased them off the state purchasing list, the state contractor purchasing list. I'm sorry, was it that or the US Commodities? I could, I don't recall. But it was a cooperative purchasing model for those bathrooms. But there are other companies out there that could, we can get quotes from.
Has everyone been happy with them?
Yes, yes, very much so. Looking forward to getting through the park bathroom and remodel plan so we can give the same textures and features that we, as we did the other Bill Burke bathrooms that were existing. But they, yes, very happy with them. The next several slides were master plan, master plan items, statuses, status updates, going through the 187 items of the master plan and giving status updates. Also, there are some additional items that, that the city manager identified for also getting additional things that were, that were from his view that we can start getting after as well. So those are, we don't have those available in this, but.
Just to be clear, I'm not commandeering the park master plan. It's more driving through when we need paint here, we need touch-up there type thing. Although some of them are trying to, can bring together initiatives that the park man, master plan calls out, whether it's dog parks, if we're gonna do one, should we look at multiples at the same time, those type of things?
It's not my intent, it's not my intent to go through all the items in detail. We do have a few pages of completed items. On the fourth slide of the completed items, I realized I made an error in miscategorizing the first two items under Sunset Parks, Sunset Park. I wrote it as completed, but it should be underway. Is the horse shoe pits at Sunset Park and adding seating at Sunset Park? Those should not be, those should not be listed as completed. Those are underway. If there's any questions about that, please don't hesitate.
And I do wanna pause. I think, I don't know the best way to report it to you and to the general public, but we are making a lot of headway on the park master plan. We've, and I'm repeating myself a little bit, but if you recall that document, it, it was a good document. It was a good process, but it was very narrative-driven. It was divided up by parks, but it was just kind of a open-ended conversation of suggested improvements. We have gone through, inventoried all those. We worked with prior governing bodies to set different weighted criteria and apply those and set a priority list. And then we've gone back and tried, identified, well, if we're gonna do water fountains in one park, let's do them in all parks. But we are making a noticeable headway on the park master plan. And Jeff touched on it earlier, and Jerry Ivy Pond's probably the next big-ticket item. And then Indian Rock Lodge is the other item that's probably a, a big-ticket item left on the park master plan. Not to say that there aren't others. There's discussion of a skate park in there as well. But we continue to plug away. And part of the reason that I developed my list is, is I've been driving the parks, looking at where we stand and how much progress we've made. And to me, I think it's pretty noticeable at this point.
To the city manager's credit, I think he was applying the critical eye that, you know, we, we painted this, but we did not paint that, for example. So if we're looking at a consistency, a modernization of our, of our park system, looking at those details and him providing that detail is very important. So we can get after those items as well. The annual maintenance, some of the master plan items are annual maintenance, whether they be repairing plumbing and electric as needed, providing mulch on playgrounds as needed on a cycle. As I guess I'm, instead of being on a, as needed, it would be, mulch would be on a cycle, whether it be rubber mulch or engineered wood fiber mulch. Painting will be on a cycle. So these are annual maintenance items that we would just continue on with. The next two slides are relating to proposed amendments to the master plan. I did talk about, for example, with the school, USD 305, relationship for Kennedy Park and for Schilling Park, making modifications.
And I think it's worth going through each one of those just because they are, are suggested deviations from the plan. And our intent would be to run that all through the park board and then come back with formal amendment to the, the master plans.
The Oakdale Park slide, it's an old metal slide. There's, it's certainly an older slide. However, it's very functional. It's safe to use. And park staff do a regular painting of the, of that. And there's also one at Sunset Park as well that we maintain. It's a desirable feature of that playground. Bill Burke Park, the item is add sidewalk connectivity to new fields. Part of the, one of these amendments proposed, one of the items of the master plan was relating to adding four additional softball fields to Bill Burke Park. So that item about sidewalks would be to add sidewalks to those proposed for new fields that the master plan proposed. Country Club Park, adding a split rail fence along Country Club to deter children from crossing it at character. You know, we don't feel a need to add a split rail fence. We don't see a, a crosswalk needed, or we don't see a lot of people crossing the street to get to Country Club Park. Majority of users of the park are coming from the neighborhood there. Lum Felton Park, which is at the corner of, by Ash and Broadway, where Ash dead ends into Broadway. There's some removing or replacing concrete picnic tables. We, we don't need to remove those, in our opinion. Oakdale Park, identifying funding source to construct a destination water feature in the former, or the, in the skating rink Country Club Park again, adding a perimeter sidewalk or loop trail. Glenifer Hill Park, adding trees to Glenifer Hill Park. And you're gonna see several of items of the two pages for Glenifer Hill Park. Our focus for a lot of park amenities would be focused on the park across the street, which is Indian Rock Park. Whether it be a playground, shelter house, improvements done to Indian Rock that would still serve the neighborhood. But, you know, Glenifer Hill is not highly used. Country, Country Club Park, consider relocating the existing playground to higher ground. We recently added square footage to the playground. We added a swing set, two bay swing set unit. Several years ago, the city of Salina, through Public Works, I believe, did some improvements to that road. And we don't have the drainage problems that we once had in that park after those improvements. It seemed to make a great improvement around holding water in that portion of the park. The second page of the proposed amendments, again, Country Club Park, there is a gazebo there. It's not a very large gazebo, however, it doesn't get used very frequently, being that it's a neighborhood park. We don't see the need to add a larger shelter or more picnic tables. If we do need to add more picnic tables, there is quite a bit of shade there. We can add picnic tables underneath shade areas without actually adding an additional shelter to do so. Bill Burke Park, there's that item, adding four new softball fields. Thomas Park, consider adding a large-scale off-leash dog park. You know, a lot of the, in our conversations within our department about Thomas Park, it, it's, we try to keep it as natural-looking as possible, similar to Lakewood. We, I believe there's some accessibility issues. If someone were to try to get to Thomas Park, whether they want to think about a dog park or a pump track or a BMX park, it doesn't seem to fit in my mind about how Thomas Park should use, be used. Parker Park, the area that they talk about overseeding to improve the quality of turf is the area in which we would desire to have a, Parker Park, as you may recall, may know, is adjacent to Carver Center, which is adjacent to the animal shelter. Parking lot's already there for Carver Center. And that's where we propose a potential dog park to replace the dog park that's used as a public dog park behind the shelter. And that's the turf to the, to the south of the parking lot at Carver Center. And that's the area that we don't feel we need to overseed if we intend on going forward with a dog park. A few items for Glenifer Hill, I already mentioned. Steve Holly Park, which is on the corner of Charles Street, just north of Crawford Neighborhood Park. We would not, we, we would prefer to concentrate our landscaping efforts at Jerry Ivy Park when we have this renovated space and for what we design and engineer. Kenwood Park constructs a, constructed destination playground in the area near the tennis center. I believe the intent of this item was to go to the east of the current tennis center, of the new tennis center at Kenwood Park. I have some issues with how, where we would provide parking for this. I think the tennis folks have indicated their willingness in the future to possibly add more courts. Not sure if a playground there is the best location.
Isn't the Master Gardener Group relocating to, up there, around that property?
I believe that's south of the location of the tennis courts is where that is. But that's, that brings up a great point, is that there is a development plan for the river relating to the eastern end of Kenwood Park. And that's certainly a priority. And I don't wanna plan something that would be in direct conflict with that plan. But yes, there, I believe that Master Gardener area is to the south, southeast of that area or south of the, of the tennis site. I'm not sorry.
You're probably picking up on the theme, but we're trying to focus our efforts on the facilities we have and improving them and getting them in good shape before expanding facilities in operation. So part of this, this review is just a hard look at, while it may be advisable or may be a nicety, is it a necessity?
Going back up to Bill Burke, where are we at on adding parking back there?
We, we had a few tournaments this, in October. One was a rather large tournament on a Sunday. I drove through at 11, you know, so to put it in perspective, a large tournament, they were using all eight fields at Bill Burke. And they were using four fields at Berkeley Family Recreation Area. The weather was great. I drove through the park at 11:00 AM and there were 55 spots available. Majority of those spots were on the north end. And, but many of those spots were available throughout the linear parking area going north to south through the park. So I felt that there was plenty of spots. However, an October tournament might not be the best example. We were deciding whether we do a pilot program to create a additional overflow spot to the north of Bill Burke Park. And based on that experience in October, I just don't think that north area would be used. It's still worth a pilot program to try, to do an overflow spot and see how we, how it gets used.
I thought we were looking at where the soccer fields were next to the river is overflow.
It would've been, yeah, on the northeast side.
Okay.
There was, that's where the overflow, that I was going to do a pilot program. It would be on grass. It would be post, posts with snow fencing and some turf paint, if you will, similar paint to we use at the soccer field. We had another tournament in October that I was going to, I was using that mid-October date to determine whether we should try to do it at the next tournament. And based on my visual assessment of how Bill Burke was parked at, it does, this didn't seem like it was justifiable for that time of year. I still like, I would like to do a pilot program in the heat of the season where we get the most visitation, summer, for example, would be, but that was where that, it would be on that first north soccer field adjacent to the river in between Field Eight and the river was where I had proposed that overflow park, overflow parking at. Couple few last proposed amendments. Centennial Park developed pickleball courts where the skate park is located. We have putting in pickleball courts at Oakdale Park. The neighborhood has expressed a desire to keep the skate park at Centennial Park.
Why would we be looking at taking it out?
The skate park.
Because the master plan calls out a new skate park at Thomas Park.
I would, I would be for leaving it there at Centennial.
Yeah. At Thomas, way up on 9th Street?
Right, right. Pump track, BMX, I, I'm sorry, Kenwood Park. It, it calls it out for Kenwood Park where the tennis site is now. So I think we kind of, since the tennis site at Kenwood Park came about and is, is constructed and used, it kind of eliminated the spot for where the master plan consultant proposed to put a skate park, that strip of land on the north, where the tennis courts are now. So it's our preference to keep the skate park, skate park at Centennial.
You know, the neighbors over there have asked for trails at Centennial. Is that on the plan?
It is. There's a slide upcoming at the end that shows some of the items relating to Centennial Park and Indian Rock. Playground schedule, as it relates to the master plan, we put the new playground in at Lakewood Park, but that playground is designed specifically for ages five to 12. In the future, we would look at play equipment appropriate for ages two to four. In the future, we would look at play equipment appropriate for ages two to four. Indian Rock, consider adding a new playground. And this would be the alternative to improving the playground at Gleneford Hill, since it's right across the street. Parker Park, which is the park adjacent to the Carver Center. Centennial Park, that would be the south park at Centennial Park that we want to make it into a larger playground. Sunset Park is a relatively new playground. However, I would not identify it as a destination playground, but it is relatively new. And Riverside Park, where Riverside Park is going to have some impact from the river renewal plan. And we're not sure what that's going to look like exactly for, for Riverside Park. And restroom plan relating to the master plan. The facilities maintenance staff are currently in the tennis bathrooms at the midway. Their intent or their goal is to finish by the end of the year and then move over to Oakdale Park. And at least get the main tennis court, or what I would call is the tennis court bathrooms in the center of Oakdale Park completed before River Fest occurs. That might be a little aggressive timeline, but that's my, that's our goal. Lakewood Park, we would address that with a CXT or a prefab pre-constructed bathroom. Sunset Park currently has three bathrooms. But the master plan item was consider adding a restroom. Sunset Park has, currently has three bathrooms. And Riverside Park does not have a bathroom amenity at this point in time. And the river renewal might bring about some of those changes. Items that are under review or reviewing how we can accomplish this item or if we can't to reconsider them. Jerry Ivy Park and the entrance, Oakdale Park, making sure all our pedestrian bridges meet code. Sunset Park has three shelters or four? Not sure. I believe that's four shelters, one large one, one medium and two small. And adding another shelter, I'm not sure if we want to. What I, what I've communicated to the community and to the staff is that we need to get our current shelter house, house in order. We need to resolve our current issues with our current shelters before we consider adding more. Lakewood Park, Lakewood Discovery Center is a, a house, basically a former house. And there's some, several items relating to Lakewood Park and the Nature Center, which is Lakewood Discovery Center. Metal Lark Park, which is a parkland on city property. There is a drainage ditch that goes through there. Looking at improving those creek planting, creek plantings. However, I believe unless we get a heavy rain, there's no water that flows through that creek. East Crawford, I, we are looking at LED lights for East Crawford for the playgrounds, playground. And vehicle, vehicle deterrence at the soccer complex. River renewal items, I won't go through all these in detail, but it's the parks that are impacted by the river renewal plan. Lakewood Park, Founder's Park, Riverside Park. Several master plan items are, can be done in conjunction with the river plan or directly after. Projects underway currently. I wanted to go into some detail. We're in the process of replacing wood structures. Or we started with Jerry Ivy, we completed Jerry Ivy. We are be doing, we'll be doing Oakdale. There's one at Oakdale that needs to be to replace the support structures and that. And then we'll be moving on to the shelters at Bill Burke. We did a lot of painting this past year. However, we've identified some more painting that needs to be done for a consistent look to our park system. We have wood maintenance areas at Sunset, at Oakdale. We have various sign holders in various parks. Some of them are raw wood, some are colored, a different color, some are blue. And we're going to make them all consistent with a dark brown look. We have more sidewalks to address. Had a slide about that earlier, about looking at different sidewalks to continue our concrete improvements. Doing benches, trash receptacles. Jerry Ivy Park for the pond area to replace that edge, to remove those bagged concrete borders. And let's see.
Jeff, I can't remember last time you reported on how we approached the benches, the wood through the correctional facility, but you might kind of explain what we've done and the breadth of what we intend to do.
Sure. The picnic table lumber and the bench lumber was pre-purchased last year by us. And it was delivered to Ellsworth Correctional Facility for them to paint it or for them to route the edges so, and the corners, so we prepare it for our replacement. We went and picked it, we went, we brought it up there and I guess we didn't have it delivered there. We had it delivered here and put it on a trailer and brought it up. And two months later, it was returned to us, or we went and picked it up, I mean. And we, this past spring, started deploying all the picnic tables through our seasonal staff and full-time staff. All the picnic tables have been replaced with new lumber, new painted lumber. And then we recently, in the last three weeks, four weeks, have started doing the benches, the same method. The benches, the bench lumber and the picnic table lumber was all done at the same time by Ellsworth Correctional. And it's just a lot of benches, a lot of picnic tables. So we've been taking it on a piecemeal type approach where we're doing it park by park for picnic tables. And now we're doing the same thing with the benches. And those are basically two by fours on the benches and replacing those. Bill Burke will be fixing damaged areas of fencing. The construction company starting November 13th at Bill Burke Park for fencing improvements and concrete improvements. As I think I previously mentioned, they're starting with concrete because the weather's acceptable for concrete. The ceiling, there's an acoustical ceiling on Eric Stein Stage. We're replacing that acoustical ceiling. That'll be done before River Festival. Working with the War Memorial folks to add some destination lighting to the memorial. Signage for disc golf for Lakewood Park is on order. And Pacific Park, we're looking at adding lighting through an LED, LED to illuminate that park. And I got another page, I'm sorry, of master plan items. Cemetery in the middle of the page, we've ordered three new metal flagpoles. And we're going to be installing those metal flagpoles, making sure we have light on all those, all three of those flagpoles are on the flags. The cemetery, replacing old archway sign. There's a granite sign that's ordered and replace of that for the Merrymount entrance off of, off of Merrymount for the Gypsum Hill Cemetery. And East Crawford area, Salina Baseball Enterprises has been working towards fundraising for Wilbur Field and potentially Mattson Field. So I think we have a lot on our plate and we're still, we're still looking at details and getting this stuff done. And so Indian Rock and Centennial Park, there are several items relating to Indian Rock Park and Centennial Park that are specific to those parks. And what we've identified is that we would need to kind of look at it as a sub-parks master plan for those parks. Or something specific to each of those parks, so we can look at as a whole. And I think that's what we're kind of doing right now with Jerry Ivy Park, since we have the opportunity by removing the pond. And Indian, as Mr. Schreig mentioned, Indian Rock Park is on our plate relating to the lodge and the overlook capabilities or possibilities to overlook the city and to improve that park. On the Centennial Park page, yes, there, on number 137, construct a loop trail or perimeter sidewalks. The neighborhood group expressed that they would wish, they wished to have, to have that loop trail. They also want it illuminated for safety concerns. They would want a lit trail around that park. Master plan does call out that trail. And also this, also at Centennial Park is a, and as well as a few of our parks, whether it be the Kenwood Park near the tennis site or this park, there's lots of uneven ground through the area. Might be difficult to play because of the uneven ground. So looking at grading those parks and those grass turf areas so we can better, make it better suitable for play and for recreational purposes. The fund update, the second to last slide. And some of the, on the right side of the slide, I mentioned I listed some of the projects that were funded from the park improvement plan, I'm sorry, funded from the park improvement fund, which as you recall, is funded from sales tax. And had a, had a, had a good balance at the start of this year or even the year prior. And we have spent some of that to accomplish items on the master plan. And that's what I have for you today, unless there's any other questions.
What's, what's the dollar amount we'll add to that park improvement fund as of January of 2024? Is that 500? It's our target balance or to, contribution, okay.
What is proposed, where there were some for 2024, which it's, of course, it's not approved for 2024. From the capital improvement plan that you reviewed in August or leading up to August, there were several projects in there that had requested funding, concrete improvements, bathroom remodel, Jerry Ivy water feature, War Memorial addition. The total for that year for 2024 was 1.8 million.
If you combine the fund balance at the end of 2023, 2024 annual contribution and then that planned spend, we are actively trying to spend down that fund balance, but we'll still have a balance left.
Any questions or comments from the commission for Mr. Hammond or our staff?
I'd just like to say, I have noticed all the improvements and work that's been accomplished. And I think this past year, we have done a lot. Thank you.
I think our staff will work very hard and I appreciate them.
How is the Bill Burke fence project coming?
They start November 13th. The contract contractor that was selected and the winning bidder or the awarded bidder from, from, from the governing body, and they start November 13th. Their first marching orders for themselves is concrete. They'll be working on a 10-foot concrete sidewalk going north to south at, at Bill Burke Park. They'll be demoing, demoing the concrete slab in certain dugouts and reporing new dugouts, dugout slabs. They're demoing the dugouts on Fields Four and Six to prepare for the premium or premier dugouts that we purchased. The lead time on those, they'll receive those first approximately the first of December. So they'll prepare themselves to install those before the end of the year. And I believe in the, I don't have a timeline for the fencing contractor. They haven't provided that to me yet. But I believe he's kind of works independently. Well, I wouldn't say independent, but he has his own crew. That's a subcontractor of Volks Parga, the selected general contractor. They feel very strongly they'll be done by, by March 31st or even before that. Well, March 1st is a substantial completion. March 31st is final completion of 2024.
And that includes, that includes the shade structures being added and all that?
The shade structures were not included as part of the bid. I've, I have ordered those shade structures and and waiting for the structural requirements to determine whether we can try to do that in-house or if I need to strike up a conversation with Volks Parga to do a change order or find another contractor to put those in. And that's for three fields on, those shade structures on three fields, yes, sir.
Comments, questions? Only comment I have, I think, was answered a couple of weeks ago that as this maintenance is being done, these same items are now being put on, I don't know, for painting the 2027 schedule or whenever it needs to be, be done.
Yes, there's a, one of the slides had to do with annual maintenance and some of those are, you know, somewhat you know, clear to us that you need to replace mulch every so often. You need to add limestone screenings to certain trails. It's also our intent to, which we've done in the past, but it's not been consistent is to kind of self-grade our conditions of each park. And we have a plan for that this fall, I'm sorry, this winter before the end of the year. And I was recent, recently reviewing the parks master plan grade. And I want to compare what we feel to what they, they felt at the time, and that was five years ago now. So I think we have made significant improvements. And then we can also say, well, if this is a two and a half out of five or a three and a half out of five, what's going to get us to four? And have, start having those conversations and present some plans to the city manager so we can kind of move from taking care of what we have to improving what we have and kind of migrate out of that 187 items of the master plan and so.
So once we get everything taken off the list the first time, is 500,000 a year or whatever we budget gonna, is that a realistic number to stay abreast of ongoing maintenance?
Whether it's that item, whether it's street, any of those that you think of in that sales tax fund, one of the conversations we've had is proportionally growing those as our revenue grows. So I think, I think we're starting to get the budget in balance to where we were allocating appropriate amounts for dedicated purposes. And if we can maintain that commitment and grow it as the economy grows, I think we should be in good shape. Part of our, you know, just, not just Salina, but city organizations in general is you, you just get distracted and you, you don't maintain that ongoing dedication. To your point about, you know, some of these recurring items, we don't necessarily have to do mulch every year. We don't necessarily have to paint every year. We don't necessarily have to put screening on trails every have to put screening on trails every year. But if we get into a cycle where we have a budget that one year it's for one of those items, the next year it's for another, then we, we don't let deferred maintenance consume.
When did we start setting aside that 500,000 for park maintenance? When, what year was that?
2016. It was part of the 2016 sales tax election.
And, and I think the, you know, staff and this commission has done a good job. And I think as we look at item 6.5 later today, where we're looking at doing some improvements to buildings, I think we're looking at being more proactive than reactive. I mean, right now, we have this laundry list of things we're spending a lot of money on. And part of that is because, and, and this is not a knock on this park staff, because you guys weren't here, but for years, we've just let things deteriorate, you know? And so all of a sudden, we have this spike in dollars we need to spend because we haven't spent anything for a long time. So I think what we're doing with the 500,000, it may not always cover everything, but I think we're doing a much better job of trying to level out our expenses on an annual basis, whether it's parks, or whether it's buildings and that type of thing. I think we're, we're trying to be financially responsible and try to level out our, our expenses over time and not have these big jumps where we're concerned about having to bond everything and, you know, so.
You heard me say it time and time again, but my goal was to stop playing whack-a-mole and start smoothing this out to where we don't have to, our budget's not fluctuating and jumping all over the place. We've got our base obligations covered and we then can start having some more productive conversations.
And I know, and there's still things out there in the parks that, you know, that we need to spend money on that aren't even on this list. So we'll, we'll never fully fund it, I, you know, probably.
If, if we were so inclined to say, okay, $5 million, fix it all now this year, would the ongoing maintenance for that, say for the next 10 years, be lower or higher than the 500,000? If you just had to guess.
Yeah, that's hard to say. I, I think the 500,000 has got us in the right, no pun intended, ballpark of a funding level that will help us maintain. If we, if we can stay at that level, and if we have growth in revenue, we're mindful of applying that growth to those existing line items, not redirecting it to a new project, I think we're starting to get our house in order.
Because we had a really big laundry list.
Yeah. If you gave us the 5 million, Jeff and his staff, I was thinking earlier, the park master plan in and of itself was a little overwhelming. And the common theme coming out of that was deferred maintenance, and they kind of arbitrarily put a cost estimate of $6 million in deferred maintenance on that. That was overwhelming. And then you look at the volume of things, just the normal day-to-day things, the parks and record trying to get out the door and all of this, that can be overwhelming as well. But we are making noticeable progress. I, I think Jeff and his, his staff are really tackling this.
Okay. Thanks for all your work and your staff has done. And it's, I think these are things that we do that the public can see. You know, these are things that the public uses on a regular basis. So again, just like the splash pad, I'm sure, you know, we always try to budget, but there's always going to be something that comes up, whatever that number is. But those are, those things are a benefit to the community and the thing that we need to continue to make sure that, we sure heard about it this year, didn't we, when it was down? That splash park, you'd see comments on Facebook, why is my splash park down again? I mean, it's a, it's a, it's an affordable recreation for a lot of people to use and it's highly, you know, those type of things are used by a lot of people.
Very important.
Sorry to add one last thought, but a question that I put to Jeff a while ago is, it feels like we're noticeably doing better in terms of just mowing in maintenance. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I think part of that's our pay plan allowed us to get to a staffing level that we're not in such a hole there as well.
For temporary seasonal staff, yes. Yeah, we were many positions within Parks and Recreation for those roles, those seasonal roles were, I wouldn't say we're fully at full staff for what we normally had prior to COVID. However, we, we did, we did well with our temp seasonal staff, including the water park.
Good. That's good here. Okay, thank you. And we'll be back in this room at 4 o'clock for our regular scheduled meeting.
Okay, it is four o'clock. I will call the November 6th Salina City Commission meeting to order. First, I will look at staff for confirmation of the Kansas Open Meeting Act. Required notice has been properly provided?
Yes.
Thank you. With that, may we have a roll call?
Mayor Hoppick?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Lenkowitz?
Here.
Commissioner Longby?
Here.
Commissioner Ryan?
Here.
Thank you. Will those who are able please stand for a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we have no awards or proclamations or public hearings, so that will lead us to the consent agenda.
Consent agenda is item 5.1, approve the minutes of the meeting of October 23rd, 2023, and item 5.2, approve resolution number 23-8159, appointing members to citizen boards and commissions.
Okay, is there an item a commissioner would like to have removed from the consent agenda? If not, I would accept a motion to approve.
Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second, we have a motion as second to approve consent agenda items 5.1 and 5.2. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That item passes 5-0. That will lead us to administration, item 6.1.
Item 6.1, approve ordinance number 23-11180 on second reading, requesting a change in zoning district classification from R2 District to C3 District on property legally described as Lot 9, Block 6 of the Holiday Edition and addressed as 255 South Chicago Street to allow for additional parking for the Salina Emergency Aid Food Bank.
Okay, ordinance number 23-1180 was passed on October 23rd. Since that time, no comments have been received. Are there any questions or comments from the commission? Questions or comments from the public? Okay, if not, I will bring it back to the commission fraction.
Mayor, I move we approve ordinance number 23-11180 on second reading?
Second. We have a motion as second to approve ordinance number 23-11180 on second reading, requesting a change in zoning district classification from R2, multiple-family residential district, to C3, shopping center district, on property legally described as Lot 9, Block 6 of the Holiday Edition and addressed as 255 South Chicago Street. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Lenkowitz?
Aye.
Commissioner Longby?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hoppick?
Aye. That item passes 5-0. That will lead us to item 6.2.
Item 6.2, approve ordinance number 23-11182 on first reading, approving the execution of a loan agreement between the City of Salina and the State of Kansas for the purpose of financing drinking water service lines inventories to account for any lead service lines, part of the Kansas Water Supply Loan Fund, project number 3185.
Ms. Tasker?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Martha Tasker, Director of Utilities. This item is a requirement of the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency Lead and Copper Rule for completion of a lead service line inventory by October 16th of 2024. This project was considered as a disadvantaged project through KDHE by the fact that they do annual demographics with the U.S. Census, and that was an advantage for us because what it set us up for was to have a 49% loan forgiveness for this project. So the state, Salina's rate was 11.6 and the state rate was 11.4. So 49%, and being ahead of the game is a good deal for us as far as the loan. Staff completed and submitted the application to Kansas Department and Health and Environment for the inventory. We asked for an amount not to exceed of $250,000. Of that, $112,500 will be forgiven. The loan interest rate at this time is at 2.13%. In addition, KDHE has Salina included on the 2024 Intended Use Program where we're on for $7.1 million for lead service line replacements. For $7.1 million, it was an estimate that we made to get us on the list while we were considered for the loan forgiveness portion, in case that changed over time. With that, this loan includes approximately $3,479,000 of loan forgiveness. The proposed costs for this project, specific to the inventory, is $138,964, and that will be funded through our Capital Reserve Fund, so no impact on the water and sewer rates. We've identified the standard slate of options. Approve the ordinance, number two, approve with amendments, postpone consideration, or approve on first reading, or vote to deny. Staff recommends option one. At this time, I would answer any questions you may have.
Okay, I'll look to my left. Any questions? Commissioner Davis?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, guess it's a requirement, so the fact we're getting a little help is good. So are there any comments or questions from the public? Okay, with that, I will bring it back to the commission fraction.
Mayor, I move we approve ordinance number 23-11182?
Second. We have a motion as second to approve ordinance number 23-11182 on first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That item passes 5-0. We'll bring us to item 6.3.
Item 6.3, approve ordinance number 23-11181 on first reading, approving the execution of amendment number one to the loan agreement between the Kansas Department of Health and Environment and the City of Salina for the purpose of financing improvements to the wastewater treatment plant.
Okay, Ms. Tasker, you're back up?
Just, I didn't even leave. I just stayed here to make it simple. This loan is for the wastewater treatment plan improvement project. It includes equipment replacements and then modifications to meet the 2020 National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permit. In addition, we have roughly $8.5 million that's budgeted for other equipment replacements that are outside of this project and funded from a separate fund. The original loan was in the amount of $31.5 million with an interest rate of 1.3%. During the development of the project, it was determined that project costs were increasing. For example, when we did the 2022 through 2026 water and wastewater projections, we based it on a $40 million project at the time, and ultimately, the guaranteed maximum price was set at $41.5 million. So this amendment, number one, increases the loan from $31.5 million to $41.5, and the interest rate stays at the 1.3%. The cost for the proposed loan amendment amount of $41.5 million is included in the 2024 through 2028 water and wastewater rate projections. So, and each year, we take a look at those annually and make sure our debt stays in place with our costs. The Utility Reserve Fund currently has a balance of about $10 million, and that is where the $8.5 million of additional wastewater replacement equipment costs will be paid from. On this project, we've identified, again, the standard slate of options. Approve ordinance number 23-1181. Approve ordinance with amendments, postponed consideration, approve on first reading, or vote to deny. Staff recommends option one this time. Answer any questions you might have?
And I guess, just to maybe have you update us a little bit, part of this project, these are requirements of the KDHE for us to continue?
To meet our 2020 NPDS permit with modifications for nutrient removal, ammonia and phosphorus removal, nitrogen at our wastewater plant before it discharges into the river, so.
So I think it's good that people know that this is to bring our facility up to the standards that's required.
Yeah, the last major update was nearly 30 years ago, so we've got good life out of the equipment and structures that are out there, typically about 20 years at best on equipment.
Just to clarify, when we say to bring it up to standards, these are new standards implemented by KDHE. We've been in coordination with them all along in terms of the standard that was likely to come, the timing of it, the financing of it. So we are improving our treatment facilities in coordination with their increased treatment standards.
Bet you couldn't get 1.3% today.
Well, in fact, and the other loans that I've been, that I just submitted previously, they made very clear that we could not get any additional dollars at that interest rate. So I think they caught on to that and changed their ways.
Okay, questions? I'll start to my right. There are some questions.
Yeah, that 1.3% interest rate is looking better all the time. Commissioner Lenkowitz and I toured out there this past summer and was pretty impressed with what all is going on. Is the project progressing? Is on schedule?
Yes, it is. It's on schedule. We may slightly be ahead of schedule, but cold weather and the winter months are coming on, so we could lose any ground that we've made so far. But we hope to stay above, ahead of schedule because ultimately, that would save some dollars on the project.
And completion is in the first of 2025, is that right?
Right. It's in 2025, and we, completion is in different phases for different portions of the treatment. Ultimately, final and gone will probably be in the early part of 2026 when everything's cleaned up and we've completed all the paperwork and submitted our final pay requests.
Well, it'd be a good long-term investment for the city.
Very good investment.
No questions?
Commissioner Ryan? Okay, any comments or questions from the public? Okay, if not, I will bring it back to the commission fraction.
Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
You go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of ordinance number 23-11181 on the first reading, approving the execution of amendment number one to the loan agreement between the Kansas Department of Health and Environment and the City of Salina for the purpose of financing improvements to the wastewater treatment plant.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 23-11181 on first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That item passes 5-0. Thank you. That will bring us to item 6.4.
Item 6.4, authorize preparation and publication of notice of proposed transfer of park property, excuse me, to the Salina Community Theater Association for the purpose of expansion of the theater facility into Founder's Park.
Mr. Wood?
Mayor Commissioners, Jacob Wood, Deputy City Manager. Sometime last year, Salina Community Theater contacted the city in regard to expansion of the community theater building. So we've had several meetings over that timeframe to talk about expansion and what that would look like. They want to expand their building to the west with about a 9,500 square foot expansion, and how that involves us is that would expand their building and move the property line into Founder's Park. So there is a process. Anytime that a city wants to relinquish park property, you have to go through a state process, which would require us to do public notice, and then there's a 30-day protest petition period. If somebody came back with a protest petition, then we could either make a decision to put that on the next ballot, or just decide we weren't going to move forward with that process. So in the process of discussions with community theater, we have a longstanding relationship with them, obviously, going back to the 1970s. Most recently, our interaction with them was an agreement in 2007. At the time, 2007, they expanded to their current footprint, and we signed a 50-year operations and maintenance agreement with the community theater. So that agreement includes all maintenance of the facility. We pay all the utility bills. We provide janitorial services, you know, just general maintenance, replacement of plumbing, heating, air conditioning, any of that sort of thing. That's something that the city is currently responsible. So as this, as this topic came up and the community theater requested expansion onto park property, city staff requested that we take a look at that maintenance and operations agreement. A 9,500 square foot expansion under their building would have the, the, the impact of increasing our liability as far as maintenance and responsibilities. So we opened that up and had some discussions about how we would go forward with revisions to that agreement. Really, there were just a couple of areas that we wanted to discuss. That was the cost of maintaining the building, janitorial services of the building, and then future utility costs. As far as the cost of maintaining the building, we do have lots of outstanding liability as far as that goes. You know, in the future, they're going to need a roof replacement, you know, HVACs, all that sort of thing. As the building ages, we are responsible to maintain those parts of the facility. So one of the things that we discussed was having the community theater put some money in an escrow account that would be used to kind of offset some of those costs. So the agreement that we came to in our discussions was that they would put, they would put aside $10,000 annually. That would start at $3,000 and increase over the next few years until it hits $10,000, and they would set that aside in an escrow account, and that would be used for major repairs. So 10 years from now, or seven years from now, when the roof needs replaced, there'll be some money in account that we can use to help offset our cost. We would still be responsible for the bulk of any of those repairs, but at least there would be some offset that the community theater will provide. We also had some discussions about janitorial services. Right now, that's done by city staff. This community theater went out and got some bids. It was about $20,000 plus a year for them to do that. Didn't think that that was something that they wanted to take on, so we kind of removed that from discussions pretty early on. It costs us between $6,000 and $10,000 a year, so it's quite a bit more efficient for us to handle that, that part and continue that into the future. And then the last discussion that we had was about, was about utility costs and, you know, adding 9,500 square foot of space onto the building, you know, would have the impact of increasing utilities. So we had discussions about placing a cap on the utilities, and, and we came to an agreement about doing that in terms of kilowatt hours. So they would basically have a baseline of use that would be established, and then anything above and beyond that baseline, the community theater would be responsible for. I will say, they have, they have committed to putting in a solar array on the ceiling there, or on the roof, not on the ceiling, ceiling's on the inside, to putting a solar array that will have the impact of offsetting utility costs for us, and I think that'll have an impact between $25,000 and $30,000 a year to the good for the city. So that is, that is certainly positive. Let me see. So at this point, what I'm really asking is if the city commission is interested in expanding the, the footprint and allowing them to have park property, is that we place this on a public, we have public notice placed in newspaper for a couple of weeks, and then from then, we would wait out the protest petition period. At that time, once that, that, if we don't have a valid petition, then we would go, we would bring that back to the city commission with a warranty deed that would transfer the park property over to the community theater. And then at that time, we would also take a look at the revisions to the agreement. That agreement is in your packet. So today, I really would like your authorization to go ahead and place that publication in the paper, and then if you have any feedback on the, on the agreement, any thoughts on that, we could make any changes that the city commission deems appropriate between now and when we sign the warranty deed. Michael Spicer and a group from the community theater is here, and I think they'd like the opportunity to talk about their expansion and what that means for them. And I have a couple of photos of schematics and stuff that they might, what the building might look like in the future. So, Michael, if you want to come on up while I share my screen here.
Thank you, Commissioners. This process began for the theater more than four years-
Mike, could you give us your name and your title?
I am so sorry.
It's hard to believe, but maybe not everybody in Salina knows who you are.
I know. My name is Michael Spicer. I am the Executive Director of Salina Community Theater. I've been a resident of Salina since 1997. This is a process that began at the theater more than four years ago, moved to the city manager's office 19 months ago, and has been in negotiations with the city since January of this- has been in negotiations with the city since January of this year. We're truly excited to be at this stage where we can bring this request to you. This began with the knowledge that our storage building, which rests to the north of the parking lot, was going to be a necessary part of the impending river project. We investigated the cost of creating an off-site storage area. However, the cost of land, building, 24-hour security, HVAC, vehicles for transport, and the time away from space by limited staff made this unfeasible, and we had to look in a different direction. We decided that creating a technical building on the land that we currently own in our contemporary footprint with multiple uses attached to the current stagehouse was necessary. This would serve as storage and be a transitional area for the movement of scenery designed for production. That was the beginning of our planning. When we created our theater education wing in 2011, we hoped that one day we would have 150 student registrations to educate young people in the skills it takes for us to accomplish the quality productions we have produced for 63 years now. Well, be careful what you wish for. For this year, we have more than 450 student registrations across all platforms. Our students range in age from preschool to adult. More than 35% of our students are on scholarship or reduced tuition. This year, more than 5,000 students will come from Salina, Ellsworth, Minneapolis, Junction City, and other towns around to visit Salina to see Center for Theater Art productions in the fall and the spring. No child is ever turned away because of an inability to pay to any of our programs. Overall, more than 8,000 young people will attend productions at Salina, at Theater Salina this year. This took us to the decision that we needed more educational space. We approached Charles Renz to create a highly functional, aesthetically exciting space for expansion. You can see a copy of his latest rendering over there. Where to build? Because of the 2001 expansion, the theater owns land to the east of the current storage area. However, this is land that is also encompassed in the future river project, and we felt we would be better partners if we could try to accommodate that growth. That's when our discussions began with Mr. Scragg that evolved into negotiations with Mr. Wood that have brought us to this moment. We hope the commissioners agree with us that the unimpeachable value of Theater Salina and the Center for Theater Arts as not only an essential part of the cultural tapestry of this community, but as an engine for tourism and tourism and economic growth warrants your positive consideration. Please vote to move this project forward for the future of locally created live theater. Just to give you a couple of statistics, because I can tell you how important it is artistically and culturally to the youth and to the people of the state of Kansas, but in the past decade, we have contributed directly into the economy more than $8,200,000 and collected more than $335,000 in sales tax that has been passed through on the services that we provide. And I stand for any questions.
Okay, I'll start then. Questions or comments? Looks pretty.
No questions.
I'm not opposed to the theater expanding, but I don't feel the city should be absorbing any more operation and maintenance expenses with the new building.
We have committed, as Jacob said, we have committed ourselves to a solar array on the existing building that will reduce the immediate electrical footprint, and we are committed to having solar on the two new buildings. Both of those buildings are not as energy hungry as the existing buildings because there's no theater in there. We've also committed ourselves to converting all of our traditionally sourced lighting to LED, which reduces not only the electrical draw, but the creation of heat blooms that causes an HVAC increase in June, July, and August, obviously. We feel that in discussions with vendors and providers of solar, that the amount of energy that would be required to do the two new buildings would be offset completely by the existence of solar arrays on those roofs.
And you will be doing the whole solar project and maintaining that yourself?
That belongs to us. That's our commitment. The solar arrays themselves, the panels themselves have a 25-year, 25-year warranty. We will insure them every year so that if there's damage, that they can be replaced. We are, we intend to fund a, an extended warranty on the inverters, and normally they are 10 years. This would take them to 20 years. The solar panels themselves are not attached to the roof. They are weighted to the roof, so at the point where the roof had to be replaced or repaired, the panels can simply be moved off of the repair or replacement done, and then they're put back in. So there's no perforation done in the membrane of the roof.
And what's the timeline on that project?
We are hoping to be able to have the first solar array done on the existing campus by late spring, early summer of this year.
Because in our next item 6.5, we're going to address energy.
I'm sorry, sir?
In our next item 6.5, we'll be addressing energy usage there at the theater.
Yeah, we are, we are keenly aware of our unique needs and have taken significant steps towards the city to have our own money in the game as we move forward.
Okay, thank you.
And I have more comments than questions. Mr. Spicer and I have spoke about this in the, in the past, and, you know, we as a city put a lot of money into certain things like the Salina Arts Center, the Field House, you know, Bill Burke Park, soccer fields, I think, you know, Theater Salina, and I'm still, I'm calling it Theater Salina. I'm getting better at that instead of SCT, and, but I think it brings a certain quality of life to the community. And, and as I look at some of the programming that's being done now, especially with the, the expansion of the educational portion, as we look at workforce, bringing a qualified workforce to the community, we never know what's going to bring a family to the community. Is it, is it baseball? Is it the Field House? Is it an education program at the Arts Center or at the, at the theater? So I think you have to be a well-rounded community if you look to bring in a professional workforce. And so, to me, there's dollars that we're spending as a city, but I think it's dollars that are well-spent. And I think this facility is a, when it's done, it's already a beautiful facility, but will be a nice entryway into the downtown from the east. So I think it just enhances what we have going on downtown. So it's exciting to see this coming along.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate the foresight that the board has. So, anyway, with that, I'll open it up to comments or questions from the, the public. Thought you were standing up to say something. Anyone else? Okay, if not, I will bring it back to the-
Mayor, I would move that we authorize preparation and publication of notice of proposed transfer of park property to Salina Community Theater Association for the purpose of facility expansion in Founder's Park as required by KSA 121301.
Second.
Sorry.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to authorize preparation, publication of notice of proposed transfer of park property to Salina Community Theater Association for the purpose of facility expansion in Founder's Park as required by KSA 12-1301. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That item passes five zero. Thank you very much. Okay, that will lead us to item 6.5.
Item 6.5 is in two parts. It's city-owned facilities, energy improvements. 6.5A is to approve resolution number 23-8165, authorizing and providing for energy-saving improvements to the city-owned, to city-owned facilities and authorizing issuance of temporary notes and/or general obligation bonds of the city to pay the cost thereof. And then item 6.5B will be authorized, the city manager, to execute an energy services contract with Schneider Electric that includes replacing facility lighting, upgrading HVAC systems, adding building automation systems, and upgrading building envelopes at multiple city-owned facilities.
Okay, Mr. Wood.
All right, so this is, this item is a culmination of work that actually started a couple of years ago in a strategic planning session, and the city commission kind of heard a little bit about what a facility audit is, and gave approval for us to move forward with that. We did an RFP to find a qualified firm to provide these services, and we, we selected Schneider Electric. For the last 12 or 15, 16 months, they've been reviewing our utility usage, going through our facilities, and putting together a plan. In March, they came to the city commission and kind of did a midway presentation to show where they're at, and now we're at the point where we're ready to move forward with what we're hoping is the first project in a, in a number of facility upgrades over time with Schneider Electric. So I'm going to invite Peter Hinkel to come. He's the representative from Schneider Electric to go through a quick presentation, and then, once he's done, I will bring it back and talk, talk to the city commission a little bit about financing and how we move forward with this.
Thank you, Jacob. And Peter Hinkel with Schneider Electric. I also have Josh Kramer here. Josh is one of our construction services managers, and I'll have him speak a little bit about some of the details. But some of the information you're going to see is a repeat, if you guys remember, from the February/March presentation. I will try not to stand between you all and KU basketball or K-State basketball, which starts tonight, which I'm giving-
If you're here till nine o'clock, we have a problem.
Yeah, that is a whole other bag of worms. But I will try to get you out of here as quickly as I can and just kind of run through things. But if you've got any questions or want me to go into anything in more detail, please just holler, and I can certainly stop. So, so, next slide. Jacob did a pretty good job of just kind of going through the background and the history of kind of where we've been and where we've gone, but really, over the last several months, I'd like to thank city staff, Jacob, Troy, Jeff, kind of everybody in the administration as far as helping us to collect data, help us to get into these facilities and these sites, and allow our engineering team and our construction services team to really put together a holistic approach to what we've identified as some big needs within the, the city of Salina. Part of what we'll go into from a technical perspective is more on the HVAC at a couple of specific buildings here in just a second, but if we go to the next slide, you'll see kind of just the general sense of what we're focused on during this, what we're calling Phase One. Phase Two, and if you recall, we talked quite a bit about some solar opportunities across the city. Really, what we identified, and I think Martha maybe had stepped out, but when Martha was here earlier, what we had noticed was some wastewater treatment plant work that's obviously ongoing, and trying to identify the right location for potential solar there, as well as some opportunities at the water plant, as well as potential even in Kenwood Park for potential future solar opportunities. So we'll bring that back to you probably after the first of the year, but really, the value there is all of the ITC, those tax credits that are available, and I'll touch on that as far as how that's impacting this Phase One project. If you go to the next slide, Jacob? But to give you, just kind of dive into the technical piece, the city's got kind of three or four main areas of focus, and these citywide scopes first start out with, with LED lighting and the conversion of LED lights. The bulk of this is going to be getting rid of three points or two points of failure from a ballast perspective, and then those fluorescents themselves, and going to an LED which actually has a built-in driver. So operationally, they're much better. They're last up to 15 to 20 years, which gives you that longevity of life, as compared to most of your fluorescent technologies, which is around a five to seven-year window, and same thing on the electronic ballast that they currently have in place. So by going to this, we'll be touching approximately 30 different sites, 30 different buildings within your kind of portfolio as far as LED lighting is concerned, and addressing about 5,400 total interior fixtures. On the outside, it'll be primarily wall packs and parking lot-type lights that you would see in fixtures of that nature that'll be replaced across multiple sites. And again, it's really, on that one, it's a driver of energy efficiency. Out of the $175,000 in total annual energy and utility savings, about 70, 75 comes directly from lighting itself. So it's a pretty big chunk in terms of the amount of savings that we're seeing just based upon this, this scope right here. Building automation is another big one, so we really spent a lot of time working with Troy and with staff to say, okay, there's a multitude of options out there. You've made an investment, a previous investment with the TranTracer system, so we're using and kind of piggingbacking off of that, that previous work and expanding that or even replacing that at certain locations. The big piece on this one is really the commissioning aspect of all of this. So often, when you have a controller installed or a new control system, it's primarily point-to-point. So the concept there is, does my fan turn on when I tell it to turn on? Yes, it does. I've commissioned that system. Our level of commissioning is a lot more to do with testing air and balancing, so making sure that in a space, whatever functionality you need or whatever airflow you need within that space, it correlates to what that space use might be for. So like an office is different than a hallway, for example. And so when we commission these systems, we're really thinking about maximizing the efficiency of their use as well as the comfort of the occupants. And it's a, you know, it's a give and take, right? It's something that we have to balance when we're going through and commissioning these systems to make sure that they're functioning properly, but then also make sure that they're delivering the comforted air and the comforted space that you require from the city services, whatever they might, might be depending upon the building. The other thing about the building automation that'll be really nice from Troy and his maintenance staff perspective is now, these additional seven sites and the connectivity that'll be there will allow them to quickly get on their computer, see what needs to be done, address that from a distance if possible, and then allow them to go onsite with a better sense of, well, what might my challenge might be, instead of showing up at some of these sites and saying, you know, expect or gadget kind of a way of trying to identify what the problem might, might actually be within that space. Next slide. The other big one is the windows at Smoky Hill and just general envelope. You know, when we came in February, we didn't really have much scope in terms of building envelope outside of Smoky Hill, and part of what we've added to the project has been some additional insulation, window sweeps, doors, things of that nature. But the big one in all of this is really fixing a lot of the windows that you see at Smoky Hill Museum. If you notice, there's, there's been some updates, and even some of those have had their seals crack or bust. Some of those windows are now about approaching almost 30 years in terms of life as compared to some of the other ones that are original to that facility. And you can kind of see in the pictures there just what that looks like in terms of the outside. We've worked with the Kansas Historical Society, actually also applied for some historical tax credits, which are pretty significant for this project, and are going to be using those as part of the payment, but also worked with them to make sure that the systems that we're installing, both from a mechanical perspective at Smoky Hill, as well as the windows and just the look and the feel, that that is all maintained to their standards. We've submitted that information, and they've approved that along with the actual historical tax credit as well. Next slide. So the mechanical systems. Part of our conversation the last time we were here was just, hey, you've got 100-plus units across your city. Well, what does that mean? Are we replacing all these at once? You know, no, I think part of what we're trying to accomplish here is kind of that systematic, let's not replace everything just, just for the sake of replacement, but let's start to get you on a better plan. And so the scopes that you'll see here within Smoky Hill, T-PAC, municipal courts, animal shelter, the fire stations, and Friendship Center, those were all deemed to be either the biggest need because of age, or also the biggest need because you've seen a lot of maintenance or historical operational challenges within those different spaces. The one that we considered that we did remove is that one that says the T-PAC option to replace the, the west arena coils and condensing units. There's some units there that we were going to replace that we talked about during the original phase that have, have kind of fallen out, and a lot of that had to do with just our approach. We worked with Troy and then the operations manager there just to understand if there's any heating or cooling challenges that you've seen over the past several years, identifying that there weren't any. You really have the capacity, and then the engineers believe that you have the capacity after we replaced the two units on the east side to be able to handle the entire load within that, that building. And so that was one consideration I just want to point out that was different maybe from the original phase in February/March moving forward. If you go to the next slide, it kind of shows a little better picture of the types and the age of the units that we'll be replacing. So it's kind of going from left to right, blue being number of existing units, orange, or excuse me, red being the units being replaced. There's only one, one real outlier there. That's actually at the animal shelter. It's a unit that's 24 hours a day, seven days a week, just for the type and nature that it is with, with dogs and so forth being there. And so that has had some significant operational challenges. So that's the only one that's within that kind of 10-year window, I would say, that is going to be that kind of 2012 outlier you see. And really, the goal of this is as you start to look at your replacement needs in the future, you know, we're about five to six to seven years out before we have to kind of go through another wave of looking at our infrastructure again. And so the hope is as we start to plan for that, we can get out ahead of these needs, we can identify the challenges or issues, and if there are emergency repairs, obviously they would fall off, but at least have a better plan in place. And working with, with Jacob and the staff, that's really the goal of Phase One, is let's fix the problems that we have, let's address those issues that are operational and that are age-related, and now we can kind of start fresh with planning and planning on our capital improvement plans in the future to address some of those future issues in about five to six years in terms of units and unit replacement. Next slide. So I'll have Josh come up. He'll just give quick overviews on some of the more important mechanical systems and just highlight those.
Yeah. All right, thank you. So as Peter had mentioned earlier, you know, the major concern here at Smoky Hill is making sure that we maintain humidity and comfort control and so on. I won't go into each of the units being replaced, but that is, that is the top priority in that facility as far as the equipment goes. But one of the main things about Smoky Hill is making sure that all the scopes included in that building are coordinated and collaborated with the city, the occupants, to make sure that we are, one, making sure that all of the artifacts are protected. that we are, one, making sure that all of the artifacts are protected, and then we coordinate our construction schedule with the occupants to minimize any kind of disruption to them, because we know everybody's busy and there's some flexibility there. But we've already been in discussion with Troy and other members there at Smoky Hill to kind of figure out what timing looks like for them, utilizing shoulder scenes and things like that, and we'll continue to work with them to narrow that down as we, you know, get equipment ship times and all of that secured. So, next slide. As far as, you know, drawings go, and this really applies to all of the buildings, not just Smoky Hill, an example is up here on the screen of the level of engineering that's already taken place, and I know that's hard to read, but as far as, you know, the level of design that's taken place, within the next couple of weeks, we will have all of the drawings for each of the buildings at a permit-level design where they can be submitted to the city for review. Any comments, things like that can come back, and we'll talk through all of those. So we've really come a long ways on the design since the last time we spoke. Next slide. Peter already covered this a little bit at TPEC, but the main thing here is, you know, we looked at the capacity to make sure that, you know, everything checked out there as far as the sizing of equipment, things like that, but we really want to make sure that the equipment that is definitely aging is replaced, and we continue to provide comfort to that facility as much as possible. Next slide. All right, Peter?
Yep. Thank you, Josh. He just really gave me a break so I could, you know, breathe for a second. I'm just kidding. So, you know, the good thing about the mechanical and kind of leaning into the solar, the solar is kind of the more fun and exciting part. I think somebody brought up about, you know, things that people can see, right, from a community perspective, and maybe it was a work session or one of the previous items on your agenda, but this is going to be one of those that I think the community can really get behind. So part of the challenge at Kenwood Cove is you have a rate tariff that's set based upon your demand. So we've got usage, which is how much am I running my tires over and over again, and demand is when I punch it, do I have enough power to really get me going? And so the demand side is whatever you really, I don't want to say get you, because it's a recorded message, they take advantage. No, I'm kidding. They have an opportunity to charge you for on the demand side, and that's really what we wanted to tackle here. And so when we looked at your rate, you were sitting right above 300 KW. That puts you into a certain rate tariff, which costs you significantly higher on your usage, along with your demand. And so by doing this small solar array, 75 KW, and applying and actually removing some of your electrical load within the domestic hot water space within that site, we'll be able to guarantee and get you under that 300 KW. So not only are we saving you money from a solar usage, solar implications, but then actually the rate tariff itself helps you to get down to a better tariff. And the way that that tariff actually works is, once you've set it, it stays there for an entire year. So if I set it in June, I'm paying similar rates or a higher rate even in December and January, despite obviously a pool being minimally used, if at all. And so the goal was, once we get this up and running, is to help avoid those future charges and help to kind of get that tariff back down, which, again, will kind of balance out the cost and, I think you took my, there you go. And the total savings on just that one item, again, is about $40,000. It's $38,000 and some change, to be exact, just at the solar array or just at the pool itself, and it's a combination of things. And it's one of those great things that, from a project perspective, I think we can really tout and talk to the community about being both sustainable from an environmental perspective, but you think about dollars and cents, it's a pretty big win for the community as well. Next slide. Any questions on the technical aspects of the project? Go. So if you look at kind of the savings and the pricing estimates or pricing, the final pricing we have, so the energy savings, this slide might look familiar to you, it's very similar. It's gone from 16% to 15%. Part of that was just scopes that have shifted and changed, and as we kind of refined numbers, but your total is about 15% of your total utility baseline being reduced. And the way that Schneider Electric will actually do it is, we come in and we guarantee the savings. So what that means is, at each facility, at each site, we'll be collecting utility data. We'll be then comparing that from pre and post and whether normalizing that data, and then at each quarter, we'll come back and work with staff to really make sure that, hey, this is what we're seeing, these are the challenges that we see, and then annually, each year, we'll actually be applying or coming back to give a presentation, both to the staff and commission, if you'd like, to discuss how we did as far as that year is concerned. If we fall short, we write a check for the difference. If we're over, that's icing on the cake for you all, and you can decide how you want to actually spend those dollars. But again, it's really based upon the baselines that we've started to create and all the utility data of the last about 24 months that we've been able to collect, gives us a really good picture on what you're using and how you're spending within each site. Next slide. So this gives you a sense of the guarantee itself. The guarantee lasts approximately 20 years. It's included as part of the initial phases of our first couple of years of our project, Phase One. You'll see there, kind of just looking from left to right, the year, the total amount, so that 865,000 is your actual base, so that's what your baseline utility cost is currently before the project, and then we'll save approximately $173,000 in energy and utility savings, an additional $35,000 coming from O&amp;M, and that's primarily in the area of lighting and reduced maintenance costs. So a lot of the mechanical systems, we were able to calculate, as well as the lighting side, where you're not having to replace lamps and ballasts on a five- to seven-year cycle, you're now going to be able to last about 20 years. There's some significant operational and cost reduction there as well, and that gets you your total. If you go to the next slide, it actually shows a little more detail, and I know it's an eye chart for those sitting out here, so I apologize, but this gives you a sense just to see what 30 years looks like specifically on the solar side. You know, I know that, I think, one of the parts of that community theater piece was to look at solar, and one of the beauties of solar is those panels do last anywhere from about 25 to 35, even up to 40 years, in terms of life expectancy of the panel itself. He brought up a good point about the drivers. One of the things that we can talk about is just preparing for driver replacement. Usually, we start to look at that at about year 15 to 20, as that's the key point of failure, as you start to go and convert from DC to AC and put it back into the grid. And so when you look at this from just a 30-year perspective, those solar panels will last into that life cycle and even beyond, but you'll see there's quite a significant amount of savings as we start to dive deeper, which is all the more reason, as we talk to Martha Tasker over in the water and wastewater side, to figure out how we can look at those sites as well, because you've got a pretty big utility expense when it comes to operating a water and a wastewater treatment plant, even with all the great upgrades that they've been able to and are in the process of accomplishing. Next slide. So the other thing is just funding, and Jacob will kind of take over here after I go through the pricing on the next slide, but these are just a couple of the different items that we've looked for and are applying. The first one is the Inflationary Reduction Act. So it's about $160,000. Kenwood Cove actually falls into a certain underserved location in terms of where it sits, so we're actually able to get an extra 10%. And so one of the things that we're looking at is how we're actually going to fund the project, because anytime you use debt service, there's then a 15% penalty. It's a whole mess of terms of the federal government and the ITC tax credits, but we're trying to maximize that and be able to get the full 40%, but at least for the cash flows, we've been using a 34%, which is that 15% reduction for how they would fund it. But that's about $160,000 a year. The other big one is these historical tax credits. There's some additional work that is being considered, some roofing and some front entryway work that's not a part of our scopes, but one of the things that we did talk to the historical folks is, would we be able just to add that into our application? They said yes, it shouldn't be an issue. So you might actually see that go up, even though it won't be associated with our scopes of work, it'll be something that the city is doing outside of it, would just be another great way for you to get additional funding through these tax credits that are available back into the community. And the historical tax credit one is, again, a little bit unique, only from the standpoint of, if approved tonight, we'll go through a process with the state, the historical, the State of Kansas Historical, State of Kansas, the Historical Society, can't even get the words out, but the beauty there is, we'll actually be able to sell those back into the local community to local banks, and they typically buy them anywhere from about 80 to 90% is what we've seen, and that's what their notes are as well. I know that Abilene just did a very similar program for some of their projects, and they're getting above the 90% mark, and so that might be an option for us to work with some local banks to keep some of these dollars local as well in terms of the tax credit benefit. Next slide. So kind of the final piece is just the pricing, kind of developing this throughout this whole process. It's been a pretty good iterative process with Troy and with Jacob and with the staff, just to make sure that the scopes are what is needed by the city, and eliminating, like at TPEC, some of the units that they didn't feel like were necessary to replace, or just looking at units that aren't very old, that don't serve the purpose of replacing just to replace. And we came in February, a little over seven and right around seven and a half, and we added additional envelope scope, and we still came in right around that number. So I think we're pretty proud with where we came. We also had multiple bidders on multiple items, so locally, we had your two local mechanicals involved, and both of them, it looks like we'll be getting work on the mechanical side, so that's always nice to keep funds local. And then there's some opportunities, obviously, with some of these other scopes as well as we look into solar and things in the future. But if you kind of go from left to right on the price, the savings, then the O&amp;M, and the big ticket is kind of that savings over 20 years, just to give you a sense from the previous slides of how that all balances out with the additional incentives, which are close to $700,000 in total. So, any questions, or leave it here, go to the next slide. The final piece is just the project schedule. So a lot of this is built on lead times. If you've know kind of what's going on in the construction world, I wish I could say it's getting markedly better, but it's kind of slowly, slowly getting worse in some cases, and it's picking up a little bit in others, but we're anticipating a lot of this work, obviously, going into 2024, but anticipate during the next several months, as we start to order equipment, being able to refine this with Troy and with staff, and then as we start to identify which units will actually be onsite at what time, then we'll be able to complete kind of a final schedule. But to be fair to our construction team, just without that true knowledge of, is it truly 16 weeks, or is it 32 weeks to finally get that, they really won't give us that answer until we finally put the money down for the equipment, which makes it a little bit challenging from a construction perspective. But other than that, open up for questions, or I'll turn it back over to Jacob to add any more detail.
Jacob, you have anything to add before?
Go ahead, and you can go ahead and ask questions if you have them, and I'll pull up some financial information.
If I miss this, I apologize in advance, but as far as the system goes with solar, excess power goes back into the grid, it's not stored in a battery of any kind?
Yeah, we looked at the battery storage, and once we looked at the impact of replacing your current electric domestic hot water heaters going to gas, and then the combination of the added cost for the solar and the batteries, it just didn't, it didn't add up. It got us to our, below our 300 with the solar alone and with that reduction, that we feel comfortable from a guaranteed perspective to being able to see that and have that benefit back into the community. From just a dollar and cents, it just didn't make sense.
It's understandable. Thank you.
A follow-up on that. I believe when we visited with you previously, it was discussed about taking some of that excess power over to TPEC. Is that still?
We looked at that. The problem was because the different averagy accounts, rates, it would cause more harm than good, and there'd also be a significant expense from getting that power over to be used at TPEC. So a lot of the opportunity that we have there with that small of a system, it just didn't make a whole lot of sense. Part of what we want to do in Phase Two, and the reason that we kind of, I don't want to say took this long to bring this project back, is we want to do a deeper dive into the solar opportunities. I mentioned, if you go to the, I was going to say, if you go to the next slide, I've got a little bit more detail on just where we looked at on the water and wastewater plant, and there's also been talks potentially to look at Kenwood Park for potential there as well, just with doing some canopies and some covered spaces that now can kind of serve a dual purpose. And we, when we initially investigated, looking at that TPEC option, it just, it wasn't going to work, and averagy wouldn't allow us to go from account to account, meter to meter. That was really their big holdup. It'd have to be two separate standalone systems.
And when you put a solar array in, is it expandable?
Yeah, oh yeah, I mean, sure, it's all based upon how much space you have. I mean, we can engineer it to handle any load that might be there, and if there's future load considerations.
And when the panels get to end of life, does the, your switches and inverters, do they, end of life too, or do they last?
Yeah, your panels are going to last longer than your switches and your inverters. Your inverters are going to be, again, that's about a 15- to 20-year lifespan on those inverters, but everything else is about that 30- to 35-year lifespan.
Okay. Largest scope of the project is lighting. A lot of your LED lamps are, they're not ready for prime time yet, and all we need to do is look at our streetlight, purple streetlights. So...
I've installed some of those in my career, so I know the pain, and those were a unique situation. A manufacturer's defect warranty is covering a lot of those street lighting issues. A lot of the interior LEDs, they've come a long, long way. I mean, when I first started with LEDs, it was a 15-watt LED lamp. We're down to nine and a half watts in a lot of cases in terms of their power and their usage, and the life cycle of those has actually increased pretty significantly from where they were when they first came out.
So I guess my question is, will maintenance staff be supplied with replacements for when one does buzz out?
Yeah, we can have additional stock added. I mean, that's, it's a pretty cheap adder when we're ordering in bulk, so it's not something that would be, we wouldn't want one-for-one, but we can have some additional just in case there's a one-off. There's also warranties on a lot of these lamps as well. Schneider has a one-year warranty and a manufacturer's warranty that we'll help to stand behind. Part of what we'll do, is we have a group called our Client Services Team, they helped us to kind of oversee all of your guarantee of savings, so they're the ones who, they'll get into your building automation system when you don't even know that they're there, kind of review that, give you grades, give you updates, give you suggestions to save additional funds, but then they'll also support you, not only with the savings, with any warranty or troubleshooting of issues. So if you've got a unit that all of a sudden goes down, and Troy, you know, can't figure it out, he can call our dedicated pass team or our Client Services Team, and a guy named Joe Zalinski will be the guy who will be assigned to you, and Joe can pick up the phone and help you out. Otherwise, there's also a 24-hour helpline. So we're here to kind of make sure that when there are issues, we can easily address them and hopefully get out ahead of them if we see a trend like the, I won't name the brand, but purple lights that you see, which if it was Manhattan, it would be great, but obviously not everyone might agree with that from a purple perspective.
They like it down here at Kansas Westland as well, but I'm convinced averagy's replacing them with the same bad product.
Well, so, full disclosure, one of the projects I did work on, they went to purple lights, and part of the challenge has been for that company to catch up, because it wasn't one customer, it was thousands of customers.
I figured they were bankrupt by now. On the cost savings, I think you've covered it, but you'll sit down with accounting and compare the numbers?
Yeah, so at the end of every year, we've kind of have what's called a reconciliation period, so the year, end of year one, year two, year three, and so forth, we'll come back and have that conversation, obviously, with the administration and staff, and then come to you all, if you'd like, to give an update on kind of the progress and what we've seen. And the real beauty is, then, we can talk about, you know, any sort of shortfalls that we maybe have, and we'll write a check for the difference. Otherwise, if we're above, those dollars are for yours to keep. You know, the challenge in any city is any changes in operation, so that's why we have a dedicated team to work with Troy, to work with Jacob and your entire group and different department heads, to make sure we understand if there's a building that now is going to go from, you know, nine to five, and now it's going from six to midnight, whatever the reason might be, you know, we need to look at that and see if there's other areas we can adjust to see those savings on the other end, because for you guys, it's about being more budgetary sound and knowing what you're going to get year to year versus just, you know, from an energy perspective, writing the check to the utility companies and hoping that you're getting good value out of that. We're here to help you with that, and that's something we'll continue to do as your partner moving forward.
And for some of these big projects, like your HVAC units, will you be putting that out for bids, or have you already bid it?
Yeah, we went with, we had, and Josh is kind of the one who handled the bids. I don't know if you want to talk a little about the bidding process, especially on the mechanical side?
Yeah, so we've already, we've already gone out to bid. We typically reach out to, you know, a good group of contractors, request them to come you know, a, a good group of contractors, request them to come and participate in the bidding exercise, provide them all the bidding documents. And so, we've already done all of that. We've secured all the pricing. So, now it's just finalizing a little bit of design and getting that in your court for review. And then, we'll work with the subcontractors that are selected to finalize subcontracts and start working through the procurement process of equipment.
So, is there any preference given to local contractors?
Yes. Yep. So, as far as mechanical, we've got two that we've been working with so far. Those are Calabrese and Pestinger.
So, just to be clear, when you say preference, a lot of people hear percentage difference. There's consideration given to local vendors, but no mathematical or financial preference given?
Correct.
Our local contractors have been?
Yeah, they've been involved, and, and a lot of that is, is Jacob and Troy, you know. And when we first started this process 12, 18 months ago, it was, you know, who are some good local folks that we can start that communication with, so they know what's coming? And we've worked with them and, and others ever since. But those are the last two in terms of who we're considering giving the final work and splitting between the two.
So, worst-case scenario, warranty work. A compressor goes out. Does Troy call you or call that contractor?
Troy can call us, and then we'll work directly with them to make sure it gets taken care of from a cost perspective as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Davis or Ryan?
To follow up on Commissioner Longby's question, we have a guaranteed maximum price. So, the, the quotes you have, we know get us within our guaranteed maximum price.
Yeah, any, any overages are covered by Schneider at this point. So, really what we're trying to do is, is get out ahead of January 1, equipment increases on pricing, which is, it's just unknown. Historically, it's always kind of 2% or 3%. Last two or three years, it's, it's, it's been closer to 10%, 15%, and that's every quarter, it seems like, that they're going about 10% to 15%.
That was my question, because if you look at the timeline, this goes out into 2025 with that maximum.
Oh, yeah. It's all on us.
Guaranteed minimum pri, or maximum price. I wanted to make sure there was no...
I like the guaranteed minimum price, if we could change.
Yeah, I meant, yeah.
No, but no.
Don't we all?
It is a maximum, and, and yes, that's, that's a good, that's a good point to make. You know, it's, it's a real challenge. I mean, inflation is a challenge, and having us order all of the equipment now, knowing that it's going to be, some cases, I mean, I'll be honest, we've got equipment for certain projects that have taken up to a year for us to get delivered and actually installed. I have a, a San Joe School District project that we ordered a chiller about 18 months ago, and it got installed in, in October of this, or this last October, just a few weeks ago. So, it, it's a real problem in the industry, and so getting that and figuring out the lead times, that'll help us also significantly with the scheduling out of different facilities, when to, when to kind of disrupt folks, because we want to keep that to a minimal as well.
And, and I know we're looking at energy savings and cost savings, but as you looked at our mechanical units, the units we're replacing are units that needed to be replaced within the, the next one, three, five years? What was your analysis of that?
I'd say the units we're replacing either needed to be replaced within the next year or need to replace three to five years ago, to, to be honest.
Ago, not in the future or in the past, okay?
Yeah. It's, it's, it's a testament really to your staff. You know, a lot of times we come in and we see failing equipment that should have been replaced a decade ago, but people have swapped out parts. And I think Troy and his guys have done a really, really fine job of keeping things up afloat and doing PMs, which is the preventive maintenance side of all of this.
One of the things I mentioned earlier when we were talking about parks and rec is trying to be proactive instead of reactive, and not just replacing things when they break down, but trying to replace things in, in kind of an orderly fashion to, to try to level out our expenses some. So, I guess with that, Jacob, you're going to discuss how we're going to finance this, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. I'm going to throw this up on the screen. This is from the staff report. So, as Peter talked, I have some, some numbers in here for historical tax credits, the solar incentive. You know, his numbers are a little bit higher than what I have in here. These are a little bit conservative. I do think, you know, historical tax credits are worth whatever we can get on the market when we sell them. So, I'm trying to be a little bit conservative there. And actually, the, there was a change in the, the federal solar incentive since the time I, I think last week, early last week, it changed. So, we think we'll be able to get, you know, another $20,000 there. So, the funding sources that we have kind of identified right now, when we started this conversation, we had the ARPA dollars that came in, and we did allocate some specifically for buildings and facilities. So, I have $500,000 plugged in there, and that's, that's cash that we have on hand. And then, as part of just our regular capital improvement planning with the sales tax capital fund for buildings and facilities, we plugged in some of the, some of the equipment that we knew was going to have to be replaced, whether we went forward with Snyder or not. And then that, that totals just about a million dollars, or a million and $50, or a million and $50,000 for the next two years. So, we've set that, those funds aside. There's another program, and it is, it's the Energy Efficiency Conservation Block Grant, EECBG. And there's funds that were allocated to each city, just based on our population size. That's a $70,000 award. We do think that, that there is actually just a new program that opened up today, actually. I got notification from EECGB that there's some additional funds there, and then we're going to go after every cent that we can go after, as far as that goes. So, what, what we're looking at with, with the incentives that we've already identified and the cash we have on hand, that we would have to debt finance about $5.5 million to make this project work. And so, the debt finance payment on that is about $455,000. What we're recommending is that we use the cash that we identified and the incentives, and that we take some additional funding from, we also take the energy savings, which we've estimated at $170,000. You can see that that increases over time. But the debt service fund has a little bit of capacity. We, we took some of the additional, when we went with the revenue neutral rate, we took some of those funds, and we put them into the debt service fund. So, there's a little bit of capacity there. And then, there's also capacity in the sales tax capital, building and equipment facility fund, that we can use to make up the difference of those debt payments. So, it would be about $170,000 in energy savings, $175,000 from debt service, and then $100,000 in annual payments from the sales tax capital. Now, I do want to mention that, that we aren't going to sell these bonds until this project is completed in 2025. We don't know what the market's going to do between now and then. So, we're going to have to come back with kind of a new financing plan, and at that time, we'll know what all of our incentives are going to be. We'll know what the exact amount is that we actually need to debt finance.
When you did this, this debt financing calculation, how many years did you finance that over, and what was your?
So, 20 years is what we've initially, what we've initially used, and we kind of just lined that up with the 20-year guarantee and savings from Schneider. We will obviously take another look at that when the time comes, if we can swing it to a shorter period of time, and, you know, make that 15 years. We just have to see at the time what rates are doing and what, what we're able to do. But obviously, we'll try to get you the best bang for your buck when the, when the debt financing comes around at that time. So, today, what, there's a couple of actions that need to happen if we want to move forward. The first is we need to pass a resolution that authorizes this project. So, it's just a project authorization. This is something that we do before any, any item that has to be debt financed. And this authorization that we put in front of you does allow us to do temporary financing on the full amount. We don't anticipate we'll do that, because we do have some cash set aside. But in the case we needed to, we would have authorization. So, that would be Resolution 238165. And that item would need to happen first. And then, if you're, want to move forward with Snyder, we would authorize, ask you to authorize the city manager to execute the energy services contract with Schneider Electric in the amount of $7,717,649. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any. And Debbie's in the back there, so this, this resolution is actually hers, but I threw it in mine anyway. So, if you've got specific questions about the debt financing, she, she has better answers than I do.
Questions or comments on any of this? If not, I will open it up to the public for questions or comments.
Ben Wenholz-Salina. I am really surprised the city, well, I'm not surprised because of what the city does and doesn't do when it comes to maintenance. Salina Regional Health Center, they already started there changing over the LED lights and stuff over eight years ago, and by now are completely done. As far as building controls, they started those six years ago. Everything is done there. As far as the cooling part, they couldn't do it on the boilers, because of the temperatures, not knowing what it's going to be and the boiler capacity. But Salina Regional's already been on board with this a long, long time ago. I'd been away from there for three years, and it was hot and going when I was in the maintenance department in the boiler room. So, the city needs to get on board with this. You guys are late in the game with all the costs that have gone up with COVID and everything else. Again, this is like the wastewater treatment plan of having to add $10 million to the amended to the thing, where you waste time and don't pull the, pull the trigger and do the gun, then your costs just keep going up. So, y'all need to get started on this and get started pretty darn quickly. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay. If not, I will bring it back to the commission for, for action.
We adopt Resolution Number 23-8165, authorizing and providing for the construction of improvements to existing public buildings in the city of Salina, and providing for the payment of the cost thereof in an amount not to exceed $7,468,000.
Second. We have a motion, a second, to adopt Resolution Number 23-8165, authorizing and providing for the construction of improvements to existing public buildings in the city of Salina, and providing for the payment of the cost thereof in the amount not to exceed $7,468,000. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That item passes 5-0. We have an Item B to address.
So, Item 6.5B is authorizing the city manager to execute an energy services contract with Schneider Electric. That includes all of the work previously highlighted at multiple city-owned facilities.
Do I have a motion from the commission?
Mayor, I move we authorize the city manager to execute an energy service contract with Schneider Electric in the amount of $7,717,000, uh, $717,649.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I'll read that. That, we have, we are authorizing the city manager to execute an energy services contract with Schneider Electric in the amount of, and that's not 7,000, you want me to say seven, $7,717,649. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That item passes 5-0. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here. Look forward to seeing this move forward. Okay. That, we have no development business at this time. That will move us into other businesses. Is there an item a commissioner would like to bring before the group?
Yeah, I got, if anyone noticed, we had a huge event in the city over the weekend, Salt Crowes Marathon, and I've heard nothing but positive comments from people all over the country. And I want to take this time to thank all the city staff that really put a lot of effort into making this happen, and all the coordinators that, that brought this to Salina. It's going to be an annual event, and it, it really, really was a much bigger event than anyone ever imagined it could be. And of course, there's probably frustration with traffic, people trying to get across town, but it was just for a few hours. Also, two weeks ago, I brought up the availability of our public notices on the website and email notifications, and I worked through that. And if you go to the bottom, clear to the bottom of the website, there is a, a button for news, and you click on that, and that will bring up the publications. I did register to receive the notification, but my email address was already in the system, and it wanted a password, but I didn't have a password. So, I had to tell it I forgot my password. And so, I'm in, I'm good, and that's still going to be a work in progress, I think, to further transition to public scene on the, on the website.
Commissioner Lincoln.
Echo the sentiments of Commissioner Longby on the marathon. And as far as convenience goes, it's a small price today. The turnout was amazing, whether you're running 5K, half marathon, full marathon. I mean, it's just, it was exciting to see it, and a lot of enthusiasm. And now that I think about it, there's something else that's worth mentioning. There's a couple of members of the city, of Salina's staff, first responders in particular, that were in a, I happened to catch it last week. There's a newly released video, a performing artist by the name of Dax, he did a duet with Darius Rucker. And we have a handful of first responders in the video, and they, they look good. It's, looks professional, and I think they've done our city proud by appearing in it.
The producer was Logan Mize, who's from Salina, and approached both the fire department and the police department on a little bit of short notice, but we worked with him to get him accommodated. And you, part of the agreement was not to prominently display Salina logos per se, but...
Sorry about that.
No, no. The way they produced it was perfect in terms of allowing our staff and to be in the video, but leaving Salina's logo out of it. But quality song by a quality artist. So, it's "To Be a Man," if you want to, if you look that up on YouTube, the, the name of it's "To Be a Man."
I did also see that a participant had a medical issue during the marathon, and their family was very, very grateful for the response of our first responders and the care they received at the hospital.
So, if I could piggyback, back on the marathon just a little bit, there, it's unavoidable to have some interruptions of vehicle traffic, but I think our staff and the event organizers did an exceptional job of laying out the course and tweaking the course from one year to the next to minimize the main roads and maximize use of parks and trails and, and facilities that we had. So, pretty creative use of available facilities to make that work, have it be, meet the requirements to be a Boston qualifier and truly, you know, have a certified distance and minimize traffic disruption.
And it was the largest marathon in Kansas. And from the chamber president, in an email exchange, she said Wichita's big mad that Salina outdid Wichita.
And part of that conversation was that Wichita needed to be more agreeable as it related to special events like Salina. That was not lost on me.
Commissioner Davis? Okay. With that, that will bring us to Citizens Forum. This opportunity for someone to bring an item before the commission. We ask that you please give your name and limit your comments to three minutes or less. Is there anyone that would like to address the commission today? Okay. With that, we do have the need for an executive session. Do we have a time limit?
Try 20 minutes. I don't want to keep you in there exceptionally long, and if we need more time, we can come.
And I guess we'll go through the motion, and you'll let us know who's going to be in there with us?
Correct.
Okay?
All right. With that, Mr. Mayor, I move for the city commission to recess into executive session for 20 minutes to discuss with legal counsel the subject of confidential legal considerations relating to the points of negotiation with both Salina Destination Development, LSE, and the Kansas Department of Commerce regarding the city's multifamily housing project. I should know this by heart by now, but I don't. Based upon the need for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship pursuant to KSA 75-4319, Section B, Subsection 2, the open meeting will resume in this room at...
5:37, would that be right?
That's what I have. Yes, sir. 5:37 PM, possible.
Okay. We got a motion, a second, to move into executive session for 20 minutes, returning to this room at 5:37, and there is possible action to be taken, correct?
Correct. Yep. So, I'm sorry, did you vote?
Oh, yeah. All those in favor moving to executive session?
Aye.
Opposed? 5-0. Sorry about that. Got ahead of myself.
So, those in attendance, and in addition to yourselves, will be myself, Deputy City Manager Jacob Wood, Assistant City Manager Sean Hennessy, Director of Community Development Services Lauren Driscoll, City Legal Counsel Greg Banksen, and then zooming in will be our Special Legal Counsel Steve Sparks and Financial Counsel Matt Webster. And then, as the mayor mentioned, it is possible that you wouldn't come out and take action today.
Okay. Okay. We will be back here in 20 minutes. We will be back here in 20 minutes. Okay, we are back in session, and I'm going to look at the city manager, Mr. Scrag. I believe you have some information to share with us.
Sure. So you have staff reports that were distributed in executive session, and for those in attendance that didn't receive a copy, there's about three sitting on the podium. If anybody wants a copy, they're welcome to them. This is the culmination of quite a bit of negotiation and consideration on your part. Those negotiations have been with Salina Destination Development as the chosen respondent to our request for proposal process for market rate apartments. As I'm sure you're aware, we received $25 million of funding from the state of Kansas for that purpose. We entered into an agreement with the state of Kansas early on in the process as it related to the purpose of those funds and the use of those funds. And then, as we've negotiated the details of an agreement with Salina Destination Development, that's necessitated ongoing conversations with the state. So one of the items before you is a First Amendment to that agreement. It's essentially kind of synchronizing the, the state agreement to the details of, of the development agreement that's been negotiated with Salina Destination Development. The state did have some input along the way in terms of reimbursement provisions and things that they were looking for that have been accounted for both in the, in the state agreement and the development agreement. And then, as you well know, we've met in, I lost count of how many executive sessions, but it's been an ongoing negotiation between us and Salina Destination Development related to the project. This is a development agreement for what we're calling Phase 1 of that development, 250 apartments. It makes provision for the distribution of funds, the reimbursement provisions, the distribution of funds for the purpose of acquiring the ground for Phase 1 and Phase 2, funding infrastructure improvements to develop, make that ground ready for development, And I won't belabor all the details of the agreement. We've been over them at great length. One other thing of note is that the development agreement, the RFP contemplated use of industrial revenue bonds, and so the agreement provides that upon execution of the agreement, we'll start the process of advertising and considering IRBs. That, it doesn't commit us to any approvals, whether it's land use approvals or IRB approvals, but it's, it contemplates that going through that process, which will include the Economic Development Organization. The representatives of the developer are here, Rick Warner, who was the original presenter before you during the RFPs, Jeremy Hurt with Murphin Development, and Mark Abbott, their legal counsel, are here. So, I certainly want to acknowledge them. I know they're here to answer any questions that you might have. I did tell them that I didn't know that it was necessary for them to be, there wasn't an expectation that they're going to make an additional presentation beyond the conversations they've already had with you. And with that, two action items. One is the American Rescue Plan Act Economic Expansion Rural Housing Grant Agreement, First Amendment. The second one is the Phase One Development Agreement between the city of Salina and Salina Destination Development. Both of those have the same options for your consideration identified. That's to vote to authorize that item. It could be to propose amendments. Obviously, that's subject to negotiation with the various applicable parties. If that were the case, you could postpone consideration. You could vote to deny, to deny one or both of them. In that event, it leaves us either not moving forward or having to pick up negotiations further. I would note one other thing. The agreement with the state initially authorized me as the city manager to execute that agreement, and so the amendment is drafted for my signature. So, that motion is to authorize the city manager to execute the First Amendment, whereas the development agreement is formatted for the mayor's signature. So, one is authorizing the city manager for the First Amendment, the second is authorizing the mayor to execute the development agreement. With that, as I said, representatives of the developer are here in attendance, and I'd be happy to try to answer any questions or defer to them.
Okay, any questions from any of the commissioners?
I'll just say that this has been a long process. I'm glad we're at the end.
And you may be stated this, and I just missed it, but the state of Kansas has reviewed the development agreement, and we've already been given their blessings, correct?
Yes, we've been in communication with them, both about the development agreement and the amendment. They provided the amendment, and they have an electronic signature process that after this action, I'll be the first one to sign, and then they'll cycle it through their process.
Okay, are there any comments or questions from the public? Okay, if not, I will bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor Hoppeck, I move to authorize the city manager to execute the First Amendment to the American Rescue Plan Act Economic Expansion Rural Housing Grant Agreement with the state of Kansas.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to authorize the city manager to execute the First Amendment to the American Rescue Plan Act Economic Expansion Rural Housing Grant Agreement with the state of Kansas. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That item passes 5-0.
Mr. Mayor, move to authorize the mayor to execute the Phase One Development Agreement between the city of Salina and Salina Destination Development as submitted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to authorize the mayor to execute the Phase One Development Agreement between the city of Salina and Salina Destination Development as submitted. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That item passes 5-0. And before we adjourn, I would like to thank Salina Destination Development for being here and being a partner with the city of Salina. This is a significant action that we just took to move the community forward. We've been talking for I don't know how long about needing additional housing for Salina. I think it would be important to know that not only the city of Salina was involved in this, but Saline County, the Chamber of Commerce, the Salina Economic Development Organization, and our other partners that went to the state of Kansas for their support, and also to thank the state of Kansas for their support in this endeavor. These are apartments that we need, and with the help of the state, we're able to hopefully get the rents to match up with the jobs we have coming, and so it's an exciting time. So, we're ready to break ground and move this forward. So, thank you very much to everybody that was involved in this. Thank you to staff and to our partners online that helped us put this agreement together. Again, anytime government's involved, I always said it takes longer than you want, but that's just the way it is. So, we, the important thing is, we're here today, and we're signing the agreements that we need. So, thank you to everyone. So, with that, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So, moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you.